That's it, then we'll do it. Okay, you ready? Okay, we'll call to meeting the final meeting of the 2020 to 2022 Stratford Zoning Commission at 7:02 PM. We have all of our regular members present and as well as Mr. Fredette. Should any items on the agenda take more time than anticipated, the public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued later. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on November 25th and December 2nd. Mr. Hendrick, do you want to read petition number one?
2385 Main Street, petition of Peter Massey seeking approval of a liquor liquor location to establish a Class D restaurant café liquor permit incidental to restaurant in a CA zone.
Petitioner present? Please come forward. Good evening, former councilman. Good to see you back in the chamber.
I want to thank you, everybody, for hearing my petition tonight. Basically, I'm applying for a liquor permit to be put on 2385 Main Street 1A. The location is zoned a CA zone, which is properly located in a CA zone which is reserved for retail, sales, and service businesses. The Class D restaurant café liquor permit is allowed in the CA zone subject to zoning commission approval per 15.8. The commission has approved several other Class D liquor permits for other restaurants on site in order for businesses to remain competitive, the ability to serve alcohol with meals, complete the dining out experience. The commission should look favorable upon this to increase... I lost my spot. Oh, to attract more visitors to the center of Stratford as a unique downtown destination for resident shoppers and commuters. Thank you. I do have my certificate of mailings.
Okay, can you please give it to Mr. Francis? Okay, questions from members?
So, this is an existing restaurant?
This was the old Sadie's Diner. We're actually moving from Oran Oak Shopping Center. We are closing that location and we're hoping to transfer that liquor permit down to this one.
Okay.
To this location.
Are you currently open now or not yet?
We are not open yet.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a restaurant already in that, right in that area, like in that same building?
Not in the same building. There's a, we own the restaurant Oran Oak Birdhouse, which is the freestanding building in front of it, which used to be owned by Hudson Deli.
Right.
So, there's, the liquor store is attached, and then above is a music store.
There wasn't one on the left-hand end, like right behind the Hudson Deli?
That's what the location we were at.
Oh, that is it?
It's the old Sadie's Diner. That's the one we're trying to apply for.
So, that's going to be you?
I'm sorry?
That's going to be you?
Correct, Oran Oak.
Any other questions? Looks fairly straightforward.
Mr. Hervanski, are there standard stipulations that go along with this? Or am I starting to read through some of this?
No, we typically do not have a set of standard conditions of approval. The only thing that I can add is that on December 6th, we did receive a memo from the Stratford Health Department. Their comment was two sentences long, basically said, "All alcohol must be stored off the floor and on approved shelving. Please submit a sketch of the proposed establishment." And I think that's something that the applicant could do if the commission chose to approve the application, that they could certainly work that out during the permit process as when they're doing their tenant fit up.
Yeah, the state comes in and checks the actual storage of the liquor.
And you haven't started any of the construction or you're waiting for these approvals first?
Oh, no, I'm pretty much done.
Oh, you are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you're kind of screwed if we say no?
I'm sorry?
You're kind of screwed if we say no?
Unfortunate, yeah.
You have to come up with another name, though. Oran Oak doesn't, I don't know. Just kidding.
We've been battling that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think, so back, I guess historically, back a while back, John Harkins had pushed downtown to, you know, get some of that done. It seems like you're keeping in line with some of the things that are going down there. How many seats total do you have in the establishment?
Somewhere around 40, mid-40s.
Yep.
Yep. It's the same size as the previous diner. We didn't change anything. We left actually the counter there as well. We just made everything nice and new. That's about it. We have the same booths there, same lights on the wall. We just reupholstered. I kept the same tables, just painted them. So, it's, we didn't change any floor plan or anything like that. It's just a lot of painting, a lot of painting.
So, there's no, you didn't build like a bar area, it's just going to be serving the drinks with?
No, there was the existing counter, so to speak, that you needed at a diner. That's the bar now. So, we didn't move anything. It's still the same height and everything. The bar stools, the stools that were there are still the same ones that have been there since Art's, if anybody knows Art's Diner.
And so, there's no need for additional parking based on this new footrest? Okay. I mean, it seems like everything's straightforward. It's kind of in character with everything that's down there at this point. It doesn't seem like any drastic changes outside of alcohol, maybe, but there's plenty of restaurants in that area already. And I do know back when John Harkins started the whole Main Street renovation, that was kind of his vision to create restaurants, unfortunately, good or bad, but the Mason's Lodge went and he owned Stevens', but, you know, we lost that space. But this, I think, would be kind of a trade-off to that extent. I know that's a thriving area, great place for people to come down, so I think this would be a good addition to it.
Thank you.
Is your bar nine seats? It looks like there's bar stools on one side of the bar, but is it a nine-seat bar as you have sketched in here, or is it additional seating there?
No, nine stationary stools.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not stationary, there are nine stools at the counter.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Further questions from members?
Yeah, and what's this empty space right there? Is that the kitchen area?
Yes, sir.
I'm just happy to see you guys coming down there. Hallelujah. I've been waiting for stuff like this, you know, in the center of town. Like I said, you know, I talked to my wife and my family. We, you know, you go to Fairfield, you got the shops, restaurants. This is perfect to see this come in.
Yes.
So, I'm very excited, you know, about this, and it's a home run.
We appreciate that.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. We'll take public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none. We'll take a motion to close the hearing on this particular item.
Motion to close.
Mr. Francis, second Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, item number two, Mr. Vecoli, you want to take that one? Give everybody a chance to talk tonight.
1410 Honey Spot Road Extension, petition of AMEC Recycling LLC seeking a site plan review and modification of a previously granted special case to allow for the processing of construction and demolition material, scrap metal, cardboard, paper, plastics, clean wood, and other recyclable items incidental to a recycling facility in an MB zone. A coastal site plan review has also been submitted with this application.
Chairman, is it okay if I speak with the mask down? Are you comfortable with that? If not, I can keep...
You know, I was going to say, please take it off while you're, yeah, please take it off while you're addressing us. It makes it so much easier for the recording.
A lawyer with a mask is never a good thing.
No, no, no.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzi. I'm really happy to be before you tonight with regard to the property at 1410 Honey Spot Road East for AMEC Recycling LLC. Believe it or not, this is a pretty straightforward application. Jay has done a great job with regard to his review. I will try and keep this pretty much on point. This property has been operating as a recycling facility since basically 1992. Back in 1992, it was approved for recycling for plastics, cans, all the recyclable materials as the recycling started to get large. It was operated by a government, quasi-government facility. The project went through DEP. The project has operated there for a number of years. Our client, AMEC, has purchased the property, and while they're taking their approval through the DEP to change basically the recycling materials from plastics and cans and things like that to construction debris, once again, everything will be non-perishable. That is basically what we are looking to do, just to change. So, right now, basically, we have permission to take cans, tin cans, we have plastics in a covered truck down into the building, dump them in the building, leave, cover truck, and go back on the road. All we're looking to do is get permission from this commission to change what's in the covered truck. Once again, it will be non-perishable, so you won't have any smell, you won't have any, you won't have any kind of odors, disturbance, there won't be issues with regard to dust or anything else because they'll be covered. That's basically the general overview of what we're trying to accomplish tonight. There'll be no change to the building, there'll be no change to the site plan. The one basic change that'll happen, if you've driven the site, there's a lot of containers there. Basically, as you can see, and I'll explain to you how this will operate, that all the containers that are currently there will base, most of the containers that are currently will be removed, and whatever isn't removed will be stacked very neatly away from the, from the trafficked area. What I'd like to do, just to give you for the record, I took a copy of all the old approvals dating back to 92 so that the commission has it in their hands, because one of the things in the suggestions by Mr. Hervanski, by Jay, was that all the former and all the current restrictions that are in place, meaning that everything be done inside, that everything be done through in and out of covered trucks, be adopted into this approval. So, what I'll do is I'll, I've got a bunch of them here, if we can just pass these down, so if anybody has any question with some of the current restrictions that are in place. The other things that's interested is this, this operation will actually reduce the number of vehicles up and down Honey Spot Road. Why do you say that is? Because we're bringing in basically the same tonnage, because you're restricted by tonnage on the roads, but since construction debris is heavier than cans and plastics, we have less trucks that are actually going to be delivered going back and forth from the site. We've handed, I think, we handed in the traffic report. Traffic study has been handed in and shows that basically there will be a reduction in the amount of traffic on both Lordship Boulevard and Honey Spot Road Extension with this, with this change in the use. So, what I have there is the current DEP approval that sits, that's basically in place that you've seen, and then all of the zoning approvals going back to 1992, all basically stating that this type of approval, this type of use is permitted. The other thing I'd like to give you, which you'll show you, is I'm going to give you a quick, so that you probably all know the site. It's in an MB industrial, industrial zone, and this is probably the heaviest industrial zone that you have in town. I've squared off in orange our site, but as you can see, basically, what it's surrounded by is all heavy industrial uses. As you come down the road, Honey Spot Road, you have Federal Express toward your left. As you continue, you have Connecticut Distributors. You do have Pasta Nuevo. We've talked to them. They're a pasta-making company. They have no issue. Basically, none of our neighbors will have any issue as long as everything remains sorted on the interior, covered trucks come in and out, and that is, I'll take you through some of Jay's recommendations, all of which we agree to. But if you look at the overhead view, you also have a recycling facility out the back, across, behind us. You see where the oil tanks are. Then there's paste trucking directly behind us as you go down Honey Spot. So, as you can see, it's the perfect spot for this use. Every use along this area is basically either distribution or large truck, large truck traffic. The nice thing also, it's controlled by the light on the corner of Honey Spot Road and Lordship Boulevard. So, what we plan on doing is having construction debris, most of it probably come off the highway. The nice thing about where this is, it doesn't traffic through any neighborhoods, it doesn't traffic through any residential areas, there's no residential areas. You have to get all the way across Lordship Boulevard and back into that area before you come anywhere close to any kind of residential area. So, basically, trucks will come down Honey Spot Road, they'll pull in, they'll weigh themselves, trucks get weighed, they pull up, they back in, they unload in this area, which you'll see for sorting. Everything will be sorted by hand, then put into different bins. That's, so we talk about construction debris, you know, we're talking about basically sheep, everything that you would, imagine tearing down a building or a house, anything that's non-perishable, that when you take down a building would be there, bricks, stone, mortar, tile, nothing that, and they have to certify, because anything that's demolished, they have to go through a pre-screening so we don't end up with any environmentally impacted materials. So, you're not going to end up with any kind of asbestos or anything like that, because before the property's demolished, any property's demolished, you have to go through an asbestos report, it's got to be inspected, and all the buildings that are demolished are supervised by the fire departments. So, you're basically bringing in all the clean material of any building that's been demolished, you're taking it in, you're sorting it out, then basically a backup or an incident, or truck will load up inside, bring it to a loading area, it'll be loaded, once again, into a container, container is covered, and then the container basically will leave the building. The trucks, when they come in, like I said before, they dump, they come in, they dump, goes into the sorting area. When they leave, they get weighed so that they have a net weight, so that we know how much they're charged per ton. Additionally, the trucks on the way out, so there's really no conflict in traffic, because what happens, these trucks come in, come out, and get weighed. We typically weigh our trucks on the way out for safety, because you don't want any of your drivers to get any overweight, any kind of overweight tickets. So, it's a very straightforward process, and it's in, like I said, the perfect location. Your regulations permit construction debris, it's very straightforward in your regulations that, let me get my notes real quick here, you basically talk about the ability to recycling, under your, under your regulations, talks about a recycling and transfer facility for the collection, compacting, crushing, shredding, baling, pulverizing of solid waste materials, including construction materials, demolition materials, wood products, plastics, tires, rags, and similar materials for reclamation and volume reduction. That is exactly what we're doing. The only difference is we're changing what we're reducing in volume and what we're sorting. In doing that, we're reducing the amount of traffic on the road, everything is done inside. If you talk, if you look at Mr. Hervanski's review of the project, he talks about, he wants us to strictly adhere to all the conditions of previous approvals, which we do. There's our restrictions in there, there's time restrictions in there. We don't, we don't, we don't propose to change any of the previous restrictions that came along, and these were all also consistent with the DEP. All paved areas shall be swept to prevent or reduce future dust. We'll do that, we do that all the time. A watering truck, wet sweeper, sprinkler system shall be installed during the drier months if needed, and all waste water properly handled for negative environmental impacts. We would also agree to that as an approval. Inspection for cleanup of windblown litter and stray materials shall be conducted daily. We'll have people on-site that will walk the parking lot, make sure that any kind of materials. The nice thing about the construction debris, it's heavier. You're not ending up with, you know, cans that are blown or plastics that are blown, blown around the site, bricks, mortar, sheet rock, typical construction materials are very heavy. And once again, they're all dumped inside and all brought in and out under a covered truck. Jay also spent all vehicles, live materials facility being closed or covered. That is basically the DEP regulations, the traffic regulation, every regulation that you can imagine does not want these open trucks on the road, and that clearly, we have no issue with that being, that being an additional condition. And there should be no loading and loading processing or handling of materials outdoors. Everything will be done indoors. Trucks will be pulled indoors, trucks will go up, material will slide out, cab goes down, the truck goes down, truck leaves, and that's it. And then it's everything sorted inside. Last condition he talked about was that there be no off-site human vehicles or no idling of vehicles for longer than three minutes, and we have no issue with that as an approval. That's actually going to be in our state approval, it's been in our state approval before, and it's what we proposed to the state, so we have no issue with any of those things. So, basically, we believe we have a cleaner operation, everything will be inside, the use is consistent with your zoning regulations. In an MB district, as I said, recycling facilities are permitted, and specifically in your zoning regulations, it's these type of materials, which are demolition and construction materials, wood products, are specifically set forth as an approved material in a recycling facility in the town traffic. Jake goes on further to say, when you look at our application, because we're revising our special permit, even though this is not a new use, I really, you know, it's, you know, it's whether you're almost, you're handling, are you distributing soda or are you distributing beer? Are you, you know, this is, this is kind of the same thing, covered under a truck, different weights, but all the same process. The, under your special permit case application, you have specific standards. Specific standards talk about the location, size, intensity of such use, shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to size of the property and existing neighborhood development. This is a distribution center. We're distributing recycled materials. We're taking it in, we're splitting it, we're reducing the volume, and we're removing it. FedEx is directly across the street, I think must be, what is that, almost a million square feet? You've got Connecticut Distributors, you've got paste trucking. This is a distribution network on this street. We believe we are 100% consistent with the uses in the neighborhood. That the proposed use shall be in performance of town plan of development. Town plan of development calls this for an industrial use, they call for recycling centers to be in this area and in this zone, and that's exactly what we plan on continuing to doing. Only thing we're doing is we're taking one approved recycling material and substituting it for another approved recycling material. The design locations, in specific details of proposed use shall not adversely affect or interfere with patterns of highway circulation or increased traffic. In effect, we've given you a traffic report tonight, which has been submitted, that states that we are actually reducing the amount of traffic that will, and the amount of trips back and forth. Once again, because we're governed by tonnage, the tonnage of the construction debris is about probably 20 or 30% heavier than the plastics and the cans, therefore, having less, even for the, you're having less trips for the same tonnage to the same site. Emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibrations shall not adversely affect land, water, or air quality. This goes also to your, or DEP approval, state reviewed this, one of the things the state required, they said, if, if all this stuff that we're proposing that's done inside were going to be done outside, they didn't say you don't want, we don't want you doing it, we just, they just said, put a fence. It's not an issue. We're agreeing to a restriction that all the materials be done, be sorted, sort, be deposited, sorted, and then loaded for leaving inside. There'll be absolutely no outside storage or sorting of construction materials, and that clearly is going to be a condition of approval, hopefully, from you folks tonight. It's a condition of approval already, we're not looking to change anything. With regard to the conditions that were suggested by Mr. Hervanski, which you'll see suggestions, suggested conditions A through F, we agree to all those, all those, based, all those conditions that Mr. Hervanski actually suggested for your approval will basically negate any impact that you will have with regard to noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, or dust. There'll be the sweeper, there'll be the daily inspection, there'll be a sprinkler system both inside and outside, in the event we have any issues, so we have no issues with regard to dust. If you know, bigger problem, if you look at that overhead map, is really who's, not at the end of our street, but who's behind us, where you have a whole big recycling of paved material, you know, facility behind there. You go one block over, you have the dump. I've been before this commission before, you know, we put the Cube Smart now, actually is a nice block of the dump. That hotel has been renovated and turned, the old hotel's been renovated, turned into apartments. That whole area has gone, has been able to clean up and be shielded. By bringing all of our, all of our activities inside will continue in that whole cleaning up of the industrial side of that part of Lordship Boulevard. The proposed use shall not adversely affect the tax valuation of neighborhood, neighboring properties as a result of the proposed use. I don't know, anybody could change the tax, there could be any tax consequences on what you're bringing inside a truck, whether it's construction debris or it's cans and bottles. So, we don't believe this can in any way have any negative impact, because the use, and once again, the use is remaining interior. If it was an exterior use, where we're loading and sorting outside, I can see how we could have a negative impact on properties, but we're agreeing to a specific condition that everything be done inside. In fact, the proposed use shall not create any fire or police hazards. We're reducing the traffic, we're out of light, non-perishables, and nothing really that could catch on fire, plus we have an elaborate smoke and fire detection system that's set up within the building. It's a long way of getting around, but I'm kind of trying to have to set a record of, we'd like the ability to do what we're entitled to under your regulations, and what we're doing is submitting one recyclable material for another, but the fact that there'll be no consequences, because both of them had to be covered, both of them are governed by the state, both of them have the need to get state approval, your approval, go through the traffic, go through a traffic review by local and state review. I have our traffic expert today, if you'd like to go get into any further detail, but it's clear, and we have a report that's submitted, that we will reduce the amount of traffic on the street. It's in a distribution, I mean, the only thing that goes on this street basically are employees to the site, to their respective uses, and then distribution trucks, whether it be for recyclable material, packages from FedEx, liquor from Connecticut Distributors, pasta from the place next door. In and out is a truck thoroughfare. The nice thing is it's controlled by light. It's also a short road, so you don't have the ability for the trucks to really gain up speed as they come up and down the streets. With that being said, I think we satisfy all of your special case conditions. I think also, we have no negative impact on Long Island Sound, we're not near Long Island Sound, everything will be done inside. I think the state has already given their comments to Mr. Hervanski, and don't believe that there will be negative, any negative impact unless we came to you to switch the way we're going to do a business and put our materials outside. For all those reasons, I think this is an application that should be approved, I think it's consistent with your regulations, and I think it's an improvement, it will be, resulted in improvement to the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think for once, you might have a short night, so.
There is any such thing as a short night, but okay, we'll give it a shot, though. Yeah. Commissioners, questions? Mr. Hendrick?
Just a comment, I mean, I think the applicant covered just about everything, very thorough, so I think any questions I might have have already been answered, so I thank you for that.
Just a quick, Commissioner Francis, how you doing? So, you said you're excluding asbestos as one of the materials brought in?
Typically, what happens, they're all, at any demolition, at any site of a demolition, in other words, you take down a house, you take down a building, you have to do a pre-demolition asbestos and report. So, typically, we don't, I mean, we can't, we're not conveying or sorting any hazardous materials. And we don't accept them either by regulation.
No sealants, adhesives, coatings, nothing like that?
Nothing.
Will be involved?
It's all, whatever comes out of a house, which has got to be, which cannot be a hazardous material, we're not taking in oil tanks that have oil in it, we're not doing, we cannot accept any hazardous materials, it's just straight construction and demolition debris.
All right, and this is a question, actually, it's for you, Mr. Hervanski. Now, the prior approval was for non-ferris materials, correct? And now it's going to include ferris materials?
Correct.
So, and...
Include what?
Ferris materials, that, you know, materials that rust, like steel.
Right, correct.
And pretty much, how long is your process to... And pretty much, how long is your process to recycle that?
I would say, we have, probably trucks are coming in and out every day. Material will sit on, in the bins, probably no more than a, maybe a day or two.
Generally, the material leaves the same day as the other, generally.
But all the ferrous materials will be stored also inside?
Correct, all separated by bins, and then going out with regard to its respective, so, you know, everything goes out with regard to whatever bin it comes in. So if it's metals, the metals go out in a metal bin. If it's concrete, they go out in a bin, if it's wood, the wood goes out in a separate bin. And those things just continue to rotate throughout the day.
Okay, I think.
Further questions? We just had one procedural question. Do you have any additional copies? Oh, wait a minute, hold on, there's two here. I guess there was more than one.
Is there any more information submitted with this that we can make, that needs to be in the record? I mean, I see this.
You have our reports.
And I have, I have the?
Do you want more of these?
I just wasn't sure if there was anything else other than this. We have the certificates of mailing, I have the sign.
You have our reports, we have all the prior approvals, which you can rely on.
I just wasn't sure if there was more submitted with this.
Correct, and everything else is in the traffic report, you also have our summary of our narrative in the presentation, so you have everything you want. I believe you have a smaller version of this, but I'll tell you what I will do. I made copies of the site plan and of the interior layout, so that I don't have, so I wouldn't have to leave, I won't have to leave this behind, and I'll just, I'll just hand these out, we can just spread out. But basically what you're seeing here is what's here, I just won't, I just won't leave
the, what I have up here on, basically just a reduced version. I think it's, you all have the plans, and I would assume you all have a set of the plans anyway. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
So just your, your engineer is John Q. Adams?
What's that?
Sorry, I just noticed the name, John Q. Adams, is your engineer. It's a pretty cool name to have, I like that. So I'm just looking at his overview, I don't know if he wanted to make a quick overview of his findings?
What's that? Sorry.
Did he want to make, did your engineer want to make a quick overview of this? I know that you said it was present, did you want to just talk quickly about your findings? Because I mean?
Traffic, sure, we can do, just a quick.
Because it is a, not particularly that street, but obviously, even now with the FedEx facility, there's been a lot more traffic on that particular road, and being close to I-95, we just wanted to know if there was any important issues that you wanted to bring to the commission's attention?
Mark Sessin, licensed professional engineer, co-signed the report with John Q. Adams, as I just noted. I've collaborated with John since the early 90s. The one thing I would say is that what we did is we looked at the traffic that's there, and we added the full build-out of the Lordship Logistics Center, presumed that there were no, none of their trucks were yet flown. There were, there were fewer flowing when we did the counts, but we just presumed the full build-out for their STC or OSTA, Office of State Traffic Authority permit, was added to that, and we completely disregarded any of the trips that are coming in and out of this site now, which there are some, and just added our complete, full build-out of all the recycling trucks that were talked about, and they're still not an issue on Lordship. And certainly, the trucks, as was indicated, are of comparable type on the inbound, and all the trucks, both prior and in the future, would be at the state limit, as was indicated. So there's not really any, the heaviest trucks are still going to be the similar weight, and even the delivery trucks will weigh slightly more because of the denser material, but those trucks are on the order of about half the weight of the fully-loaded tractor-trailer. So there's not really any increased risk from this versus what's occurred there in the past, and I can say, I've been consulting since 1993, I was actually working at CRA back in the early 90s when this facility was implemented, and I can say that, you know, through the 90s and up to the full-time they were operating it, there were trucks, similar trucks coming in, towns all over, and similarly outbound trucks going out, fully loaded, because that's the only way it's efficient for anybody to ship things, is at the fully-loaded capacity of those trucks. So unless there's any other questions?
In the beauty of this location, it's in the right place. It's in, it's on a well, the feeder road is well-equipped. The road into, the road, Honey Spot Extension has no competing traffic, meaning there's no residential traffic, there's no retail traffic, it's basically everybody doing the same thing along the road that's controlled by a light that's close to the highway. So, the perfect ability of this is it stops any kind of bleeding through the neighborhoods and things like that. It couldn't design an industrial area better in a town than what you have here.
I'd say one other pertinent thing, on Lordship itself, the traffic is actually lower there than it had been in the past, going back 10, 12 years, and even then, we're talking about on the order of 16,000 vehicles a day, which is about 60% of the capacity of Lordship Boulevard. I mean, it's a five-lane road, two each direction with turn lanes, there's plenty of capacity out there, there's plenty of capacity on Honey Spot Road Extension, it's a dead-end street, and across the way, Honey Spot Road itself, the traffic analysis, a lot of people that, most of the people that come around of there are making a right turn, they can go right on red, even if they don't have the actual green, and most everybody coming in and out of here is coming from 95 and going back to 95. Unless there's a specific need to service the area, 95 is where people will be coming and going.
The other, one thing I will add, we've talked about earlier, is that this is not a peak-traffic-type of use. Driver's paid by the hour, the last thing they want to be doing is sitting in traffic from, you know, 3:00 from Stanford up or going back in the other direction. So typically, this is a lot of midday use, where you don't have a lot of competing traffic. So it's, is that correct?
Absolutely. We do work on dozens of these foul-ways facilities, that's our specialty. I myself am at about 80 site trips a year, specifically to look at permits, and I can say that there's no reason for them to, the operators of these facilities, they have, there are people coming and going during rush hour. Typically, they spread it out throughout the day, and the facilities that have a lot of citizen traffic, you'll see big peaks when people aren't at work, maybe on a Saturday, but these are commercial facilities, generally Monday through Friday, from early in the morning till mid-afternoon is when they're operating, and most of them are essentially closed down, other than a few outbound trucks by the evening rush hour.
And the nice thing, where this is, truck backs up and you can, there's nobody to work that, you know, there's nobody around. It's a perfect location. I'll sum up with that, if there's any other questions you have from any of our experts, we're happy to do that.
Okay, last chance, any questions? Mr. Francis?
Yeah, one quick question. Now, you haven't mentioned it, but I do remember in looking through the past application and approval, that one of the routes was Surf Avenue. You haven't mentioned it, but would you be willing to exclude that route? Because now it has become more of a residential area since 1992.
It's hard, we can control who comes in and comes out, it would be, and I can tell you, they're only going to access our property from Honey Spot Road Extension. After that, we have to rely on the data, because you really can't prohibit anybody from using any public street. Based on our circulation, I think even in the report, it says 70 to 80% of it coming from 95.
Yep, I mean, so, just the end of Surf Avenue between Lordship and the highway would certainly be used. North of the highway, I can't see a need unless it's a local truck.
We just don't have the ability to restrict it. Once people are on a public street, other than, and even we can't tell people, don't put your truck on Merritt Parkway.
Right.
That's a state police issue, which I've seen, unfortunately, it's more, hard to believe. But that?
But you haven't really mentioned that route anyway, because you're saying most of their traffic, 80% of it's going to be on and off the highway. I just wanted to kind of inquire about that route, because it's way more residentially dense now than it was in 92.
What will happen if you have a tear-down and a rebuild a little bit north, they're going to come straight down and go to our facility, but they're not going to be traversing through different areas. The beauty of, we talk about this, being so close to the highway, so close to Lordship Boulevard, which is a major feeder, and Honey Spot Road to the north, there's not the, a lot of, some of the older issues in the towns, and, for example, in cities like Bridgeport, you have to get through residential areas to get to the industrial. The beauty of this place, the beauty of this whole area, is that it sits where, is where it sits. But we can't, there's not much we can do to restrict where it comes from, we can just tell you, logic will tell you that, and his studies will tell you where the traffic is coming from.
Thank you.
Last, last question, just on the, just to make sure I understand this here, so you said, the intersections function at level of service B during the AM and PM hours, with everything functioning at D or better, so, just make sure, so where is the level D? Or is that as a result of any of the activity on site, or is that just the, I guess the D is what the Honey Spot?
Yep, if you look on the top of page three?
Yes.
The intersection as a whole is B, as you just indicated.
Yes.
The movements that are Honey Spot Road itself are the left, because you have to, you have to make, wait for?
Wait for green light to get through, okay.
The way that signal is timed, and this took some time, because we were waiting for the signal timing plan, which is at the back of the report, from the DOT, which was, they gave us, but basically, the way that's timed is if there's several trucks, either from this facility or from the Lordship Logistics, not all of them are going to make it. Some of the trucks are going to have to wait two cycles, at the peak.
Okay.
Similarly, the only other one that's D is on Honey Spot itself, as I indicated earlier, if you're coming south on Honey Spot and you're going to make a right, you're going to take advantage of the right on red. But some of those, because of the way it's an offset, each of the legs of Honey Spot Road and Honey Spot Road Extension are given separate times, because if it was, if they were directly across, you could time it so that people could be going at the same time. But because they're offset, the state's signal design is such that Lordship gets, both directions go at the same time, but Honey Spot Road Extension onto Lordship gets an exclusive, and Honey Spot onto Lordship also gets an exclusive. So, either one of those, coming either from the north, heading south, or from the south going north, when you might have to make a left, you have to wait for the actual green light, you can't make a?
No left on green.
No left on red, so you gotta, you gotta wait. And the way the state design is, is that they're giving preference to their highway.
It makes sense.
Conceivable if they went out there into the future, when Lordship Logistics was fully operational, and I saw it was finally operational, and they may do this, and tweak their timing to give the side roads a little more preference. But even as it is, even though the preferences, as the state has it designed, is perfectly satisfactory to operate, you know, as is presented, but could they tweak it and make it a little better? Yeah, they could, but that's, would take an act of going to the OSTA. And we didn't have to go to OSTA, we don't have to go to OSTA, but as was indicated, Lordship, they just went to OSTA with less information than this. I mean, their application was a few diagrams and a very short report, because the state recognized that even though they have more trucks than this facility generates, it's not, it's not a big deal compared to what Lordship is designed to accommodate with a five-lane road.
Mark, just for the record, this proposed change in the product that we are recycling, basically going from cans and glass and tins to construction debris, will have no impact on the level of service for any of the intersections that we discussed?
No, no, exactly. And in fact, when they were operating, there was more trips. This is less trips, the tractor-trailers are operating exactly the same, and the haul trucks are operating exactly the same. And the good news is when they're leaving, they can accelerate a little bit quicker. The people coming in, and when they were, when they came in, they're fully weighted, when they're leaving, they're empty essentially, so they can move a little quicker, but it's not any different, and in fact, a little bit better, because there's actually fewer trips than what the regional recycling facility had been generating.
Last chance, members' questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Are there any members of the public, any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, take a motion to close. Mr. Vigliati, seconded by Mr. Vaccola, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no, carries unanimously, and we'll, out of the public hearing at 7:50, 7:47. And we'll go, immediately go into our administrative session. Let me just get reset here. Mr. Hendrick, you want to do the honors? Good, Mr. Vigliati, you want to start the, take the first item off the table?
Administrative item number one, 1620 North Peters Lane, petition of Jorge El Medina seeking to establish an accessory apartment incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS-1 zone.
Do we have to do that one? Go ahead.
Yes, let me just pull up my staff comments here. Okay, so the applicant is seeking to allow the establishment of an accessory apartment for a family member. After review by the zoning enforcement officer, the application complies with all the prerequisites in order to apply for an accessory apartment per section 4.1.6.14. As a condition of approval, the zoning commission may choose to require that all conditions and requirements as outlined in section 4.1.6.14(c) be strictly followed. Yeah, you know?
Excuse me, folks, can we have quiet here? We're just trying to connect, I mean, thank you.
And the applicant, you know, applicants are required, if they meet all the conditions, they're allowed to apply to the zoning commission. They meet all their condition, they meet all the conditions and requirements, and this application is, we give the recommendation for it to be approved. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Hendrick, seconded by Mr. Vaccola. Further discussion?
So, in short, they've done everything we've asked, they've done everything they're supposed to do, and they are not asking for anything special.
Yes, that is correct.
Seems straightforward to me. Any other remarks or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Not that all. All right, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hendrick.
And I suppose this is the right order, but text, motion to take text amendments, Strafford Economic and Community Development Commission seeking to add a new section 3.3.2 to define incidental live music and entertainment, and amend 7.1.7.2.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick to take the text amendment off the table, is there a second? Mr. Vigliati, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Your pleasure, members?
Mr. Chairman, and just, there have been some changes, I think, to the original?
Let's make a motion to approve, and then we'll go through amendments and discussion.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the text amendment?
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Hendrick, seconded by Mr. Vaccola, now we can have discussion. So, in reference to that, I sent, to try to move things along here, as everyone knows, we concluded the public hearing, so it's strictly within the hands of the members here. So I listened to some of the discussion, and especially some of the questions that the members had brought, and I do have some additional questions on a few things, but I'm suggesting, I put together a list of, one, two, three, four, five, six different amendments, that I think would help us get to a better product. One of my concerns is that I had mentioned during the November- One of my concerns is that I had mentioned during the November, November tenth public hearing, is that the presenters had mentioned that there was, they had envisioned a permitting process, and it was not articulated in the proposed regulation. So I wanted to add that in there. So let me walk you guys through what I'm doing. I'm trying to, we can certainly take anything off the floor, but I wanted to walk in here with a few items on paper for us to go through. So, starting off, like, my first question was, they put in, and I dislike vague texts, it says, "such as a restaurant or brewery," but in the discussion that ensued during the public hearing, there was discussion about, you know, this could be something that could be done at, say, Perry House as part of a nonprofit, even though it's not really a commercial, but, you know, there are other places that might do this. We talked about bars that are not breweries or that. When you put in "such as," I get worried in the construction because they're like, oh, well, if you're a bar owner and you look at this and you say, okay, restaurant or brewery, I am neither, does that mean that I am automatically entitled to it? Well, no, we're just saying, commercial establishments, if you're not, you're subject to this, and instead of saying that it's permitted, or is permitted, it says may be permitted, subject to strict compliance with the town's noise ordinance, which, as we had mentioned, is very, it's actually very well-written in chapter one forty-two. So I left the original text in there, and then I'm adding the following underneath it as my suggestions of a way to amend this. And I wrote, "Any commercial establishment desiring to offer live music or entertainment shall apply to the Office of Planning and Zoning for administrative approval. Police Department and Health Department improvements shall be required for permit issuance." That is actually exactly what Mary Dean had suggested would be part of the approval when she presented it, but it was not included in the reg. "The applicant shall be provided with appropriate guidelines, including a summary of applicable portions of chapter one forty-two of the town code. If we're going to permit them, they need to know what their responsibilities are, as far as what their levels are. There's some very intricate wording in there about hours and days and what you can do. Make sure that they're aware of it. The applicant shall provide the town with at least two contact numbers, not including the business telephone number, for use in case of any noise complaints." And we had talked about, I had asked about, the term I use is one that I deal with in some of the industries I work with called a stop buzzer. Something goes wrong, who's the person we can get a hold of? And if there is a problem there, I don't necessarily want to talk to the maître d' or the, you know, the cashier working there. I want to make sure I have somebody that has the authority at eleven PM at night to, or, you know, or any hour when there is a problem, to tell them, okay, cut it out, stop, and they're actually taking responsibility for it. Each permit shall be valid for one year from the date of issuance, and must be renewed in the case of a change of ownership. Again, that was something that Mary Dean had suggested, that they had talked about, they had talked about maybe for the first three years they would do it, but let's just leave it as it's a yearly thing, similar to what we did with outdoor dining to begin with. "Live entertainment is limited to the lot on which the commercial establishment is physically located and cannot impede parking, pedestrian, vehicular traffic flow on the property." So this is the venue, or we want to call it the little pub issue, where we want to make sure that if they're offering this, it's for the purpose of their patrons and their enjoyment, not extending it to be some sort of a venue that's not part of it on adjacent properties, or extending the boundaries of their lot. I want to be actually on the facility where the, where the restaurant is. And again, recycling some of the language that is potentially going to be removed from the outdoor dining, failure to comply with check two one forty-two or other applicable regulations shall cause the revocation of the permit. It had talked, Mary Dean had also talked about that if they are not in compliance with them, then they might not be permitted to continue this. So these are some suggestions, happy to take questions, or, but I want to at least start the discussion with a few things that I think would actually allay some of the concerns that were expressed during the public hearing. Okay?
I think these are all good additions to it.
Mm-hmm.
Clarify, one of the, one of the biggest concerns that I had in the original rendition was there are a lot of vagaries. I think this clears up all those points. I think it's a, as written, it's a very rigid regulation, but I think that that's maybe a good thing. It gives the, those who will be enforcing it some teeth and some clear guidelines as to what follows. So I think you did a good job with, with making these changes and amendments, and I would support them.
Okay. Further, Mr. Francis?
So, I mean, definitely, you made some, some, some great editing of some of the wording that was involved in the initial application, that, you know, definitely caters to some of the residents' concerns. Just, just for clarity.
Mm-hmm.
On the, where is it at here? Okay, "For each permit shall be valid for one year from the date of issuance, and must be renewed in the case of a changed ownership." But it still has to be renewed annually, correct?
Annually, yeah, and that's what she, the way the main, Mrs. Dean had suggested is that they would do it in January. I didn't want to put that in there, because then if you, say you open your business in May, does that make it sound like the door's closed for you for, until the window opens up? So, you know, I don't see any reason to do it that way. So what my intent was, is that you're going to get a permit for a year. Let's say you'd open in May, well, guess what, you're good through the winter into May, I don't know, you might decide to have a winter carnival or something like that. But what I wanted to make sure that, you know, if you do have a change in the ownership, then, you know, basically that stops, because now, the contact information's going to change. The new owner may or may not be aware of the regulations, so when they start over, you know, get it there, and then they'll be on the annual schedule for renewals, just like any other, any other business would be.
Now, how are we going to regulate, because I know they said they would, we would revoke their permit if they, you know, do not follow the guidelines that were put in place.
Mm-hmm.
Now, where do we stand with a, you know, area where, okay, you've had enough complaints, now you're being revoked? How are we going to establish that?
Yeah, well, we want to talk about that one, so maybe our planning and zoning administrator and our legal counsel might want to chime in on that. I just brought the ideas, implement.
No, no, great ideas, I mean.
Any thoughts?
If I were a resident, I have questions I would ask.
I'm sorry, it just, it took me a while to get this together, so I should have given it to you earlier.
So, so I guess my, my comment would be, so we have, it looks like, almost, you know, six, six items potentially added to the definition that defines what this entertainment is. We could potentially add a seventh item that says, you know, during the administrative review process for each permit, any or all departments reviewing such application may refuse to sign off on the permit, subject to violation, you know, three strikes, or, you know, I mean, I mean, I, I'll just tell you, I mean, I have a hard time seeing myself or my staffs denying any permit to anybody on a yearly basis. You know, I think maybe the police department might be, I mean, might be more likely to say, look, you've, you've had three strikes, you know, I'll defer to Commissioner Vakola's experience on that, you know, I'd hate to pass the buck on to another department, I'm just trying to see, you know, I need to think about how, when someone challenges my decision and my enforcement action, I mean, I spent last night here at the zoning board of appeals defending my own action for several hours, and that's the way we need to think. So, you know, you could maybe state that there's a three-strike policy, and after three strikes, the zoning office is given the authority by the zoning commission to not sign off on it. And I think it has to be specific in that, in that respect. That's my initial thought, and I'll continue to kind of, kind of mull it over in my head here.
And then, and that's an option, and one reason why I was a little bit hesitant to put something like that, and I did think about that, is what constitutes a strike? You know? And I'm remembering a, you know, the one thing I want, don't want to happen is you have like two businesses that are competing against each other, and then, you know, oh, it's too loud, oh, it's too loud, it's too loud, okay, I just made three complaints, you know, guess what, you're out.
And I can certainly tell you that that is what's happened.
That would, that would happen, yeah.
I mean, it would have to be clearly defined as, you know, a noise ordinance violation as issued by the health department, because they're the ones who issue the noise ordinance violations.
I mean, one thing that I think is positive is because it requires police, health, and zoning, you know, each one has a different realm of experience. Are there health violations? Are they, you know, you know, doing something that goes against public health by keeping people up at night? Is there a safety thing? And the zoning thing would be like, are they doing something like impeding traffic flow? Do they cordon off eighty percent of their parking lot in order to have a stage for the band? Trash leftover, things like that? So it's almost like, there's three different realms that, you know, the three, you have to agree that it's, I would say, is either worthy of renewal or not worthy of renewal for something to happen like that way.
And that's reasonable, and just from my position, in my nine to five here, is I don't like judgment calls.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's much easier when it's written down in black and white that just says, you have two strikes. And a strike, not that necessarily that is what is going to work best, because, you know, there's going to be times where someone goes two minutes over, or, I don't, I don't know, you know? I don't love judgment calls about, you know, getting together with the chief of police and the health department, say, well, you know, we don't really like these people, you know, their food's not good, so let's, or, you know.
Yeah. So I'm open to any suggestions.
Would Attorney Sullivan have any guidance on the issue?
I think it's kind of tricky. I mean, I suppose you could say that you could adopt some regular, you know, some format in the future, you know, that you don't have to decide right now, you could figure out, see how it goes, because I think you have, I don't think you know exactly what the issues are going to be. But I agree with Jay, he could spend all day, and all week, you know, tracking down, and then you are going to have competitors, and then just, some people are going to like some stuff and not like other stuff, and so you're going to have, I mean, it's sort of your own perspective, so it's a little tricky. I mean, I suppose you could have it, if it's not straightforward and there are violations, you could refer it to the commission, you know, to say, you know, if there's an issue in the renewal of the permit, refer it to the commission.
Yeah, I think Attorney Sullivan, that's a good suggestion, and I might suggest, so, you know, each, you know, the live entertainment regulation, or applicants must operate under the two-strike system, you know, two violations, and the planning and zoning administrator has the right to send the applicant back to the zoning commission for administrative
Review.
Review. To discuss, I mean, you almost want it more than administrative review, though, I'm trying to think, you know, because you want the applicant to be able to speak, right, during the administrative process.
Yeah, and, and be confronted by, you know, and be able to address complaints, because if it's like, you know, the, you know, the neighbor next door, you know, or let's, let me think of, you know, I'll give an extreme example here, McDonald's has outdoor music, and the only people complaining is Burger King, you know, then obviously the commission can weigh that, that this might not be a legitimate complaint against the particular person. So for public.
So you're saying that the person that's, that actually put in the complaint will have to be here also, too?
You know, they have, that would be their option, if they, if they want to. I mean, it's in their own hands, if they feel that passionate. I mean, I could tell you, you know, one of my, my experiences with a noise complaint was a very strange one during my first term, that, and as we know, Joey Sees was like the only place that had the permission, and they wouldn't have music, and there was a woman that lived on the other side of the Housatonic River, and would call me every Saturday night at between eleven and midnight to complain that the music was still going on and she could hear it in her house. I'm sure she would be here. You remember those, too? Yeah, I mean, I got an urgent call in Phoenix, Arizona, once, it's like, do you realize what's going on over here? I'm like, oh, how did you get my cellphone? Jeez. That was in the old, old days, two thousand eight, nobody had, knew anybody's cellphone number, somehow or another she got it. So, you know, that person would, would definitely, I'm sure avail of themselves of the chance to offer their perspective, too, if it came before review.
But, excuse me, but a lot of people, when I was on the job, that called about noise complaints, wanted to remain anonymous.
Mm-hmm.
And then they said, we, you know, as we clear, after we talk to whoever about the noise, would the complainting want to be seen, you know, for us to go there? And they said, no.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, and you're going to get ninety percent of that, and they're not going to want to talk, or give their names, and that's where the problems are going to lie. Like you said, if somebody doesn't like the place to begin with, they're going to keep calling, you know, and it's, it's just a tough, tough call.
Yeah.
I think Attorney Sullivan brought up another good point, you know, it's hard to predict exactly what's going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the permits are valid for a year, you know, as soon as we put a permit together and make everyone apply for it, and, you know, you could potentially take the, make a recommendation to the following zoning commission, or this commission could issue a letter to the town council recommending that, you know, a different fine system or, you know, a strike system be implemented as part of the noise ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And you just kind of wait and see, and don't put anything, restrictions on it just yet. And let the next zoning commission kind of react to what happens next year, if anything happens, you know, you just don't know.
Yeah, I agree.
But I think originally, the out, even the outdoor dining, we had, and the ADUs were, all those approvals needed to come before the council. You know, we would hear the case, in ADU, we, we had changed it to administrative, where now you reviewed, Mr. Ramansky reviewed the whole process, reported to us that it met all the criteria, but we would actually have the applicants come and do the presentation. I actually did one once by the time, but do the presentation before us, the same with the outdoor dining, we would have the applicant come for a certain amount of years until we kind of got our feet wet, but their renewals were done through the zoning commission, not the zoning administration, and then after it was years, when we became comfortable with it, and there was kind of a perfunctory type thing, we changed that to an administrative item. So perhaps, you know, to get started, any, any renewals would need to come before the zoning commission for full approval, those approvals would include sign-offs from the police department and other, and other appropriate departments.
I agree with Mike.
That takes it out of your hands, you know, doesn't make it a random thing, like you were saying.
I think that, you know, there's a little bit more accountability this way, and then also that, you know, the commission is elected, we're elected people, and then there is some public recourse, I suppose, based on the decisions we make. And if it's all in the hands of an administrator, you know, you don't have to answer to anybody, I guess, you know, on a certain level. So it seems more democratic if we have, people have to come before the commission to get approval. And if we do, you know, we do have two meetings per month, it's not a question where they'd have to wait so long, it wouldn't really impact their business a great deal if they had to wait for approval. So it seems to me that that might solve a few problems, at least in terms of, you know, what kind of options we have to revoke the right to have music.
And maybe we even want to say renewals, renewals can only be denied based on a verified three violation process, you know, so it's.
Or any proposed rejection or non-renewal, whatever the word you want to be, would have to be referred to the zoning commission for final adjudication.
I think you could say something like, the expectation is that renewals will be routinely issued over the counter, permits with issues of record will be referred to the commission for review, something like that, so that you, you do maintain some control, but that generally it's routine.
And I can just speak towards, you know, if you had. if you had fifty restaurants coming next month, you would be here very long. Cause we have, I mean, in January and February, I mean, it's very, there's a very busy time of year for these, you know, for the commissions and the office, not only the commission, but also our office. And just logistically, I can tell you, it, it will be challenging. Not that it couldn't be done. But, you know, I'll say, for the outdoor dining, how many outdoor dining renewals have you guys seen in the past four years?
Zero.
They're supposed to come back every single year.
I think we changed that to administrative, didn't we?
Maybe. But I can just tell you, it'd be, logistically, it would be challenging. I think, I think I'm more receptive to Attorney Sullivan, maybe. And maybe one of you commissioners might have suggested it as well, that, you know, maybe the planning and zoning administrator has the right, based on violations, to send to the zoning commission for review. But what type, but what type of review?
What was your language?
The expectation is that renewals will be routinely issued over the counter. Permits where issues of, permits with issues of record will be referred to the commission for review. I think that, you know, Commissioner Vakola made a, a good point, which is sometimes people wanna be anonymous. And that's both like because they wanna be protected and also because they wanna call again. So I think, you know, that gives you a little bit of, if you wanna put your name on record or say, I'm calling from wherever and, and, and I think somehow you should figure out, you know.
I mean, the, the other, the, the other benefit of doing it, even the administrator, the ability to send it to the commission is if somebody, you know, sometimes people, I mean, it's a crazy time we're living in. Somebody might, might fear retribution for some reason or another, you know. Every resident in Stratford has an elected zoning commissioner. They can call up their commissioner and say, hey, I can't go before this guy, but hey, just want you to, wanna know, gang. And then the elected commissioner becomes the vehicle to, you know, inquire, advocate, seek a, a better solution there too. So it sort of takes it a little bit, some of the problems off their hands and allows, you know.
You could even make that an exception, say, or when referred by a commissioner, you know, cause I know that you have.
That's true too.
You know, so that it could be issues of record, meaning somebody is not anonymous, or a referral by a commissioner. So the expectation would be that if somebody was from a particular district, they would go to that, or someone else, I mean, whatever. I don't think you should restrict them that way. But then that could just be added to the agenda because the, you know, a member of the commission, you know, wouldn't need to have backup for that, except that they got a, you know, anonymous complaint.
Should I ask me?
How do you all feel that, that review in, in the instance of a referral or a recommendation to come before the zoning commission? Is that for a administrative referral? Which I think might present challenges of having an open record and, or a, yeah, having public comment, allowing the applicant to speak, allowing the public to, to comment on that, speak in favor or opposition? Or just, so either a public hearing format or administrative format?
Both, I think, create challenges. Cause if it's public hearing format, then there's advertising and, yeah. Notification of abutting property holders, I mean, yeah, good question.
Because, I mean, if you go administratively, essentially the applicant has to just submit a letter saying, you know, this is where I went wrong. And then what do you, then what does the commission do? I mean, you can't ask many questions. I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't see how that's help, that's very helpful to the commission or the complaints.
Yeah, it's not, not, not easy. And everything will work fine until the first time we have a problem. That's why I wanna leave some sort of structure in place so that we can start down this road.
How about, the permits will be approved administratively by planning and zoning staff. Or if violations occur and are referred to the zoning commission by staff or a commissioner, the commission can choose to suspend the, the permit. And that way, all you, all the commission can do is react to the letter, get the violations, and then you all make the decision as to whether you suspend the permit or say, oh, these are frivolous complaints. And that would be an administrative review.
Okay, so say that again, just so I can get some notes.
Permits will be, are expected to be approved by planning and zoning staff administratively and may be referred to the zoning commission. By, by staff or a commissioner, if a violation occurs. Where the zoning commission has the right to suspend the live music and entertainment permit.
The right to suspend until, until what?
Suspend or revoke.
Suspend or revoke.
And then the commission at that point could say, look, these, these violations, you were told five times, you had the music anyways. You had a, a, a letter from the zoning, zoning enforcement officer, you still did it. You're suspended for two years. You're suspended for six months, you're suspended one year, or it's gone altogether. That way, there's some latitude given to the commission as to, you know, to kind of weigh in on how egregious the violations maybe are.
Yeah. And worst case, you can wait it out for five new commissioners to be seated and take your chances with that group. Make your case.
Would we want to report violations or, or suspensions of, of this permit to the, to the liquor commission? Not, not, you know, after the hearing, if, if, if we decide to suspend it. Not complaints, but suspensions.
Okay, I think I might have something here. I'll try to read it back.
Let's go.
Okay. Permits will be approved by planning and zoning staff. Permits will be approved by planning and zoning staff and referred by staff or a, or a commissioner for an administrative review if any violations occur. At which point the zoning commission may suspend or revoke the live music and entertainment permit of the subject facility. Period. All violations will be forwarded to liquor control.
All suspensions.
All suspensions.
And that's, gives it some teeth.
And I would say that that would be item number six. I'm sorry, number seven, if all these other ones survive here.
Item seven.
And I would recommend that these bullets be changed to either numbers or letters.
Correct.
All right, so do you wanna amend, or are you still wanna?
Before, I'll make a motion to amend it, but do, are there any other concerns with any of the other texts suggested? Or should we just take these and block?
Not for me.
I'd take it as a whole.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the, to amend the text amendment to include, I guess, is in three, three, two.
Read the whole thing.
Are they numbers?
Proposed three point three two.
To amend the proposed three point three two, to, to include, sub, to amend the text in the second line, to strike out such as a restaurant or brewery, so that it's clear that this is only for all commercial establishments. Change the reference to may be permitted. And then add in the one, two, three, four, five, six, the seven bullets. The six as presented in the text that I gave. And the seventh one is discussed by Mr. Hamansky.
You wanna read those into the record?
I will again. Okay, so item, are they? It's item one. Any commercial establishment desiring to offer live music or entertainment shall apply to the Office of Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning and Zoning, for administrative approval. Police Department and Health Department approval shall be required for permit issuance. Item two. The applicant shall be provided with appropriate guidelines, including a summary of applicable portions of chapter one forty-two, the noise ordinance of the town code. Item three, the applicant shall provide the town with at least two contact numbers, not including the business telephone number for use in case of any noise complaints. Item four, each permit shall be valid for one year from the date of issuance and must be renewed in the case of a change of ownership. Item five, live entertainment is limited to the lot on which the commercial establishment is physically located and cannot impede parking or pedestrian slash vehicular traffic flow on the property. Item six, failure to comply with chapter one forty-two or other applicable regulations shall be caused for, let's say, suspension or revocation of the permit as described in section seven, which as we said, permits are expected to be approved by staff administratively and may be referred to, by staff to the zoning, or by commissioners to the zoning commission, at which point they have the right to suspend or revoke the permit. All suspensions will be forwarded to liquor control.
May I take one more stab at that number seven on some language?
Please do. Cause I was trying to read my own handwriting and I can't.
Yep, so for item number seven, permits will be approved by planning and zoning staff. And if a violation exists, staff or a commission member may refer to the zoning commission for administrative review. At which point the zoning commission may suspend or revoke the live music and entertainment permit. All suspensions will be referred to liquor control. Period.
I accept that.
Should it say, renewals, permit renewals, or just?
Under which part, which?
Seven, just the, the beginning.
Is it permits or renewals?
Permit renewals. Permit renewals.
Yeah, because if it's a first time, I don't know that there's a, I hope not. A violation beforehand? I hope not. All right, let's, on that rather large group of amendments, any discuss, I make that motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Francis, discussion on the amendment only?
Again, I think this is a, a very restrictive ordinance. We're discussing, I think it lays out a lot of rules. I think initially those rules need to be in place until people understand how to play the game properly. I think one of our biggest concerns through this process is to not create something. We want, we want to enhance our, our, our offerings to, to the, to our taxpayers and, and the visiting guests. But at the same time, we don't want to take down the quality of life of our taxpayers and residents. So I think this sets a very strong criteria. Once people learn to play by the rules, it won't be so restrictive. And I don't think at that point so many rules will be needed. But I think the initial offering, this makes sense to make it so restrictive and so punitive. But again, I believe that once people understand how to, how to work in with, with what we're trying to accomplish, which is to, you know, make our, our dining experience and our nightlife better without impacting the quality of residents, they'll all learn to play together peacefully. And, and this will be something that was, hopefully, just like our outdoor dining, just an administrative thing that everybody now understands and goes by the rules and it, and it works well for everybody. So I, I think it's a good, a, a good start, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Further comments?
Yes, I, I also, I agree with Mr. Henrich. I think this is, this establishes, establishes at least some detailed accountability for some, some of the, the outdoor entertainment that goes above and beyond with no accountability. This also was actually, it was actually greatly expanded where, at least now the residents, you know, feel like they have some, something to, to hold these establishments accountable for. Whereas it probably was a little vague before. I think us, this commission definitely gave it some teeth. So it could, it could regulate going further with other establishments so they can have a guideline of, okay, if you violate, you, you, you're gonna have accountability with the zoning commission and your permit in the future. So I, I think this is, is a good start. And we might have to change some stuff here and there, hopefully not, but I think it's a good start.
Thank you, sir. Further comments? Just to sum up, yeah, I, I agree. And, you know, and I think this will probably, hopefully, go down the road similar to what outdoor dining did, where at first we put on conditions. There were some issues every now and then that we were concerned about, like how they were taking the sidewalk, you know. But generally, that has gone to the point where the fact is that it's now, you know, pretty much universally accepted and everybody, and it works fantastic. And it was a godsend during the, during the pandemic, you know. And, and I think we gotta start somewhere. I think what was presented to us was a little bit too vague, so that's why I wanted to get some specifics. And they may loosen it up over time in the future. But at least we, they have a starting point. And the assurances that were given by Mrs. Dean, I think, needed to be codified. And I tried to stay true to the vision that they were offering during the public hearing. Okay, all in favor of the, of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Any further discussion or further amendments as on the entire package? I do have one question I will ask, though. All of the proposed changes to the outdoor dining reg, are those all required by the revised state, state statute? There was some, there was some discussion during the meeting that the dining was connected to the music and that certain things we still wanted to hold on to. But I think you had indicated that most of this was required by the legislation that was proposed.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. The applicant really was looking to get section three point three two adopted and only section K of the outdoor dining removed, which was the prohibition on live music. You know, at the same exact time, new legislation came and said, no municipality can, it, outdoor dining is permitted as a right, incidental to a restaurant. So many of these sections had to be removed. So, so that, that's correct.
And that's the regu, that's the order, statute, not, not these executive orders that may or may not last.
That is a statute. That is not, not an executive order.
It's an important differentiation between the two. Because there was a lot of discussion back and forth over what was part of the executive orders and what was part of statute. And I wanna make sure we stay close to statute. Further discussion? Okay, if not, we'll take a vote on the regulation as amended. Mr. Vigliotti?
Aye.
Mr. Francis.
Aye.
Mr. Vacola.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it's also important that we, we give the reason of consistency with our plan of conservation and development.
You are correct, sir, and I overshot that.
Prior to your vote.
And I had that in front of me. I'll go back to it. Unless somebody else can grab it real quick. Oh, you have it here. Okay. So just to read into the record, so as stated here, the proposed text amendment appears to satisfy and be consistent with all of the below objectives, policies, actions, and steps identified within the P O C D. To increase wealth and opportunity throughout the region by collaborating on business recruitment and retention policies, to collaborate on issue identification and problem solving to preserve and enhance shared centers of economic activity, simplify the zoning code to increase usefulness and understandability, to streamline the development process, and assure, to assure that developments which are consistent with the town's development regulations are approved in an efficient and prudent fashion, to retain existing businesses, to revitalize and enhance Stratford Center as a unique downtown destination for residents, shoppers, and commuters. The town's economic development efforts will focus on attracting and retaining of new businesses and industries. Town will pursue tourism initiatives that have a high economic development potential for the town. Town will promote and encourage and participate in revitalization of its business areas. So if we needed to have more reasons, sorry about that, I jumped the gun a little bit on that.
Why don't you pass that down to me for the next one? Why don't you pass me that for the next one?
There you go.
This is for the file.
I understand.
Yeah, but we're going to need, we might need that for subsequent there.
You meant the next music one.
Okay, sorry about that. So let's, let's start over again. Mr. Vigliotti.
Because this amendment supports our plan of conservation and development, I vote aye.
Okay, Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Vacola.
I vote aye.
Mr. Henrich.
Yes.
When chair votes yes, the motion is adopted five zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Motion to take twenty-three eighty-five Main Street. Peter Massey approval of a liquor, liquor location to establish class D restaurant, cafe liquor permit incidental to a restaurant in a C A zone, off the table.
Motion to take twenty-three eighty-five Main Street, off the table. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Vacola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Your pleasure, sir.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henrich. Second by Mr. Vigliotti. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this, this application seems fairly straightforward. It's in a location, as I stated earlier, Mr. Harkins, as our mayor, had put great efforts into enhancing our Main Street, developing it as a restaurant location, you know, kind of a one-stop. He did a great job in doing that, and this is, this is just another extension of that area. It does, it is consistent with our P O C D, and I've got some other language I'd like to read into the record after other comments, but I think, I think it's a great extension. There's a number of restaurants there, there's no additional parking required, so I think it's a great fit for, for the area. Mr. Massey has an established business relationship with Stratford. He's done a phenomenal job on, on other locations, and I, I think he'll be a good, good neighbor to, to Stratford at his current location.
Okay, thank you, sir. Further comments?
Yeah, I also, I also agree. I think this establishment coincides with the area, the surrounding area, where there are also local restaurants and establishments that serve alcohol. I, I actually remember that Sadie Diner, I think I went there a couple times before, and, and, and I think it fevered, revitalizes it, and I think it would be a great addition to that area, so I, I could agree with this.
Okay, further comments? I would just add that, you know, Mr. Massey's establishment, Oran Oak, it's been located up in my district for some years, and it's been very well-run. I enjoyed going there, so I look forward to bringing this addition to Stratford Center as we continue to revitalize our restaurant scene, and I think that might be contemplated in the P O C D. Would it, Mr. Henrich?
I, I do believe it will, sir. And, and one of the reasons being that, you know, of my approval for this, it is consistent with the P O C D. Some of the key items in that sense, P O C D calls for us to retain existing businesses, which Mr. Massey is an extension of it, to revitalize and enhance. Stratford Center is a unique downtown destination for residents, shoppers, and commuters. The town's economic developments will focus on attraction, retention of new business and industries. The town will promote and encourage its revitalization of its business areas, and this is a, an existing business that is being revitalized, so those are some of the, some of the key reasons why it is consistent with the P O C D and why I would support it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
That's for him. Mr. Chairman, motion to take fourteen-ten Honey Spot Road Extension, Hammock Recycling LLC, site plan review and modification of previously granted special case to allow the processing of construction and demolition materials, scrap metal, cardboard, paper, plastics, clean wood, and other recyclable items incidental to a recycling facility in an M D zone, off the table.
Motion, Mr. Henrich, to take fourteen-ten Honey Spot Road Extension off the table. Is there a second? Mr. Vacola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Your pleasure, sir.
Mr. Chairman, he, he seems to, based on...
Let's just make a motion and then we...
Oh, sorry. Motion, motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve fourteen-ten Honey Spot Road Extension by Mr. Henrich, second by Mr. Vigliotti. Now discussion.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, he seems to be, that they will be conducting an almost identical business to what exists there with less, less traffic and less stress to the area. It is an industrial area. All warehousing, storing, separating will be done under roof. I would like the, the approval, I guess I maybe should have read it in earlier, but as, as a condition, it would adhere to all previous conditions of approval and restrictions and, and all of the zoning administrators' comments previously made about this application. But it's a similar, it's, it's an identical process, and it's an identical business, it's just a change of materials which they recycle, and, and so I would move to, for approval.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Vigliotti.
I'd like to add also from the comments from DEEP, that the applicant should provide the commissioners with a copy of stormwater general permit. And should seek to obtain one from DEEP's Division of Water Permitting and Enforcement, because it says that as of November sixteenth, they did not have that on file.
Okay. Go ahead. Oh. Ooh.
I'm sorry. I was, I was taking note and looking for a document, and I couldn't find it, so I might have missed part of that. I heard planning and zoning administrators recommended conditions of approval.
Okay. Okay, why don't we read, why don't, can you read in conditions, I guess it's A through F that they agreed to? Do you have that in your letter? The planning and zoning administrators, all right, let me, let me read them here, and then if you choose to make a motion to that effect, we can do that. It said, the applicant, like, item A, the applicant shall strictly adhere to all other conditions attached to the previous approval letters. B, all paved areas shall be swept clean to prevent slash reduce fugitive dust. A watering truck, wet sweeper, and/or sprinkler system shall be installed during drier months, it's supposed to be I E R months, if needed, and all wastewater properly handled to reduce negative environmental impacts. Item C, inspection for and cleanup of wind-blown litter and stray materials shall be conducted daily. Item D, all vehicles delivering materials to the facility shall be enclosed or covered. Item E, there should be no loading, unloading, processing, or handling of materials outdoors. And item F, there should be no off-site queuing of vehicles and no idling of vehicles for longer than three minutes. And Mr. Vigliotti is requiring the stormwater, you want to restate what you said, sir?
The applicant should provide the commissioners with a copy of a stormwater general permit, and if the applicant doesn't hold such a permit, it should seek to obtain one from DEEP's Division of Water Permitting and Enforcement in the Bureau of Materials Management and Compliance Assurance.
Okay, we'll take those as items A through G, we'll call that one. For amendments, any discussion on those amendments? If not, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Further discussion or amendments? Just as far as discussion, this does seem, I really do appreciate the, the very lengthy discussion that we were provided with. You know, it seems, it's interesting that this started in nineteen ninety-two, and, you know, that was really the dawn of when recycling started really taking hold. I remember we actually had a recycling commission in town, and it was, obviously, it doesn't exist anymore because it's just part of our everyday life, but the handling of materials for recycling, you know, continues to be something. I'm not sure if you would consider this a, a green business, but it is certainly, when they're talking about, you know, going from aluminum and, and glass now into wood and demolition materials, you know, technology's improving, there's more ways to reclaim raw materials, and that seems to be, you know, something that's growing in here, and it's probably a good thing for us to be part of. We are strategically located very close to Interstate ninety-five, so, and I think this has been a, pretty much, it's maintained in the P O C D as an industrial land, so that's consistent with what we are doing, and it seems like the conditions set forth assure environmental compliance, considering that it's so close to the waterfront. So I would be, I'll be supporting this proposal. Mr. Hambansky, any further comments, or any other thing we're missing here?
I think I have it all here.
Okay. Further comments from members? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, approval of minutes of the November tenth and November twenty-ninth meetings. Is there a second, Mr. Vacola? Any discussion, corrections, changes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. CAM site review for fourteen-ten Honey Spot Road Extension. Don't believe we handled that yet.
We haven't, so we did receive comments from DEEP. One of those conditions that I have recommended in my staff comments was attached to the site plan review, as suggested by Commissioner Vigliotti. I would recommend that same condition be attached to this coastal site plan review application, that the general permit for discharge of stormwater associated with industrial activity be provided to the Office of Planning and Zoning and kept on this record, and if the applicant does not hold such a permit, that it should seek to obtain one for DEEP and deliver it to us at that point. The additional comments that we did receive were from the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission. We received their recommendation letter yesterday afternoon at four o'clock. It's a two-page letter. I will paraphrase their, let's see, following their, their findings or recommendation, following significant discussion, including discussion with the applicant's representative, the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission approved a motion to express no objection to the proposal, provided it is determined that the, determined to the satisfaction of the zoning commission that the proposed use in the property complies with all town requirements of stormwater management, that the proposed use of the property complies with the applicable FEMA requirements, and that the applicant establishes properties proper safety measures and procedures to avoid any significant adverse impacts on coastal resource, on coastal resources during flood events. I would say that the commission may consider requiring that as a, that statement as a condition of approval if they so choose. The date of this letter is December seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Mr. Francis. Is there a second? Mr. Vacola, can you give us that language one more time that you had suggested to include in the amendment, or include in the approval?
I'm sorry, me?
Yes.
The, the Waterfront Harbor Management Commissions? Okay. The project shall comply with all town requirements for stormwater management. The proposed use of the property shall comply with all applicable FEMA requirements. The applicant shall establish proper safety measures and procedures to avoid any significant adverse impacts on coastal resources during flood events.
Would you accept that as a amendment, Mr. Francis, Mr. Vacola?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Any enforcement issues, complaints? Hearing none. They already dealt with the accessory apartment applications. Any sediment or erosion control?
My work agenda is gone, so.
Oh.
I don't know if you, I may have given it...
It's probably piled in here somewhere. Okay, so no other sediment erosion, I'm assuming?
No.
Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is correct. So just to refresh your memory, we had tabled the CAM site review for Surf Avenue, because we believe that it was not in the coastal area management zone, but we wanted to hear it from you.
That's correct. The application of the subject property is not within the coastal boundary, there must have been some sort of Freudian slip with Surf Avenue and the coast. I don't know how that made it, but it is, did not require a coastal site, site plan review.
And all our other actions were reviewed and on task and on target.
That's correct.
You were flying solo that night.
Mr. Chairman and I had a long conversation the following morning. We worked through all three approv, oh, four, three?
Four.
Four approval letters.
Yep.
And I sent them to the chairman for his review. At that point, I think Mr. Chairman told me to, to go ahead and issue those approval letters. And to know, and to notice your, your decision, which has all been done.
And then one last thing, since this is our last meeting, and I would ask this, the board members who'll be staying, is the cupola, town hall cupola, and the, don't need a report tonight, but just that you guys, the...
He told us he would have a special meeting every night to the thirty-first to ask the question.
But the cell towers, the cell towers and the removal of the relocation, so stay on top of them.
Okay. Okay, before we move on, so I think that's the last of our legislative business. So points of personal privilege, it's our last evening together, as tradition holds. I know Mr. Henrich said, don't make them long and boring, but we'll give everybody a chance to just offer their parting thoughts to the twenty, to this commission, if they choose to do so, and we'll start. Mr. Vigliotti, we'll start in district order. Any final thoughts?
Well, I just want to, yeah, you know...
He's staying, so, but you, you can say whatever you want, because this is going to be, it's going to be a new commission when we reconvene.
So long.
Yeah.
It's, it's been, you know, I learned a lot by working with you guys. It's been, you know, really beneficial for me to work with some veterans on land use. I did do four years on planning. This is a whole different thing, though. I, I thought I knew what I was getting into when I got here, but this is a different thing. But I feel like, you know, working as a commission and working for the betterment of Stratford, despite whatever party affiliation we have, I, I feel like that has really been good for me and, and good for the town of Stratford, and it's really been an honor and a privilege to serve with you guys, and, you know, I wish you the best, and I hope that I could do as good a job... an honor and a privilege to serve with you guys, and, uh, you know, I wish you the best, and I hope that, um, I could do as good a job as I continue, you know, as we all did together here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Francis?
Uh, yeah, I definitely didn't expect some of this. I mean, being in construction, I thought I came in knowing some stuff, but, uh, I definitely learned a lot being on this commission. Um, there's, there's definitely some administrative, uh, procedures that, you know, I definitely learned a lot about. Um, it's definitely been an honor working with you guys. I mean, it's, you know, it, it was never really a divisive situation. We all pretty much worked together, uh, on, on the betterment of, of the town and what, and what we expected of some of these applicants coming in. Um, and it, it does really, really portray genuinely that we all care and we love the town, and that's why we're all here, 'cause none of us are getting paid millions of dollars to be here. So, uh, we definitely must care about our town to, to give our, our, our time and, and our dedication. But it definitely was a good experience, and, uh, uh, I know some of you guys will be moving on to other, other boards and commissions, and I wish you the luck, and, and, and I hope you have, have as much support as I felt like we gave each other here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vicola?
First of all, I'd like to thank the voters.
All three of them?
Missed the recount, you could call me. And I wanna start off with, thank you, Mr. Fedett, for bringing me on board and getting me involved with all this, and, uh, your guidance and leadership when you were the chairman. Uh, Attorney Sullivan for your legal knowledge and your friendship during these meetings. Uh, Mr. Bansky, I, you know, you got a tough job. You do a great job, and, uh, I thank you for your support through all this. Mr. Silhavy for your leadership, your knowledge. Um, it's been, you know, great to help, you know, your help for me, and Mr. Henrik, the two of you guys, um, I really wanna thank you, and for Ms. DiCilio. I appreciate you being here for all these meetings and dealing with this and, uh, the minutes, and I just wanna thank everybody. Thank you for the, you know, the support, and I hope we made a difference. I think we did, in working together, and I wish you both, uh, good luck for the next two years and to continue to, you know, to keep making this town go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Chairman?
So, yeah, it's been twelve years running, um, two alternate terms as a zoning commissioner, and, and one in the middle is an alternate. I'd said, and, and, and I still do mean it, if, if I could stay, I would, but because of term limits, uh, I got forced over to the Board of Ed, so there you go. I am gonna miss looking up to the ceiling, uh, this ceiling, you know, as many pieces of Stratford, there are many amazing parts of Stratford. It, it's just making sure that people know they're there. I think we've done a great job of it. This ceiling is one of those amazing pieces. There's no other town hall that I've seen that is so well-constructed and so beautiful, um, over my years as the council and here. I've, I've, for better or worse, spent some time looking up at the ceiling, sometimes out of boredom, sometimes out of awe, but, uh, spent many hours looking at it. Um, uh, Mr. Vigliotti, you're, uh, you know, as, as members staying, your, your thoughtfulness, I think, will, will serve this committee well, and Mr. Francis, I've been truly impressed with some of your comments as of late. Um, I think you've, you've, you've grown into and are growing into what will be a great commissioner, so hopefully you guys will continue in that, in that same vein. Um, serving with Mr. Vicola and, and Mr. Silhavy as we all go, it's been an honor. I think we've done a phenomenal job on this board of moving applications through, parsing through what, what's nonsense and what is. Um, a large part of that is due to Ms. Sullivan. Your, your legal guidance has been much appreciated, and, and not in, in just in the knowledge, but in the way you delivered it. It gave us the opportunity to decipher what you were saying. You, you gave us guidance and, and shared your knowledge, but, um, gave us a wisdom that allowed us to make intelligent decisions, so I appreciate that, um, and I appreciate the manner in which you deliver that. Obviously, Mr. Bansky, you're, you're doing a great job here and been a, couldn't do it without you. I mean, we, we gave it a whirl last month. I don't know, what an integral part you-
Watched the video. It was rough.
Without you, we couldn't do this, and, and so your professionalism has allowed us to, to thrive in our roles, and, and obviously, Mr. DiCilio, um, you get the minutes out quicker than any other secretary and, and probably more accurately, so, uh, your, uh, your service here is, is well-appreciated, but I wanna thank everybody. Um, it's been awesome. It has been, and we've always, I think, Mr. Silhavy, we've served a couple of terms together. We've always tried to keep this board apolitical. I think we've done it. We've respected each other's thoughts and opinions, um, you know, got a little upset with each other on some small occasions, but nothing over the top. But that's, that's just a sign that people are passionate about what they believe in, and, and, you know, it's the open forum that Mr. Silhavy created here, um, the decorum he maintained, the professionalism. You, you've been a great chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Um, sometimes a little too rule-oriented for my liking, but you kept us on the up and up and kept us out of trouble on, on many, many occasions, so I, I appreciate your leadership in that role, but again, thank you, everybody. It's been awesome. Uh, maybe I'll be back in four years, or if I get kicked off the Board of Ed sooner, but, uh, it's been awesome, and, and as I said, if I could, I'd stay here for all my years in Stratford. It's been a great, great time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fedett?
Wasn't prepared. Didn't think I was gonna be able to speak tonight.
I decided to break your rule.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure watching and working with you guys when I had the opportunity. As a, you know, I'm sure Mike and I have shared in the same thoughts along the, that zoning and the zoning board is truly the engine that runs this town. We, uh, we've done a very good job, uh, the two years I was chair and sitting in as an alternate, uh, you know, I appreciate everything and all the comments and all the hard work that everyone's done. And, uh, the zoning board's loss is the Board of Education's gain, so. But, uh, again, Chris, thank you for your leadership, and everyone's done a great job. Hopefully it'll continue, and we'll bring a lot more businesses into town.
So just to wrap it up, um, it is a phenomenal, um, privilege to be a member of this board and to serve with you gentlemen, and I am, um, so thankful for the time we've had together, and, uh, I think I agree with Mr. Henrik that, you know, if, if I could stay, I would, and it was, I think on election night, it was starting to hit me. It's like, okay, well, you know, you decided, okay, let's take a little time off, take a little break, and, okay, I'm not part of this anymore. I don't know how I'm gonna react to this, but it's been twelve years on this board, another two as an alternate, so I got like fourteen here. And of the three boards I've sat on, zoning, planning, and council, this is my favorite. I really do enjoy the work we do here. I enjoy the fact that we're judges, that we're, we take the time to be a deliberative body to evaluate things, to give, make sure we have wise decisions. Um, and I've learned so much from all of you, and I agree, Mr. uh, Mr. Vigliotti, we, you're gonna, I'm looking forward to you and Mr. Francis continuing in, in what we're doing. Whenever you're on zoning, it's, it's like, it takes you a few months to get your sea legs, and then once you do, you know, you can, you can, um, you can really move forward and ask the intelligent questions, and I know you'll guide our three new commissioners-elect, um, in, in, um, reaching their full potential. Uh, Mr. Vicola, it's been great to serve with you. As I've mentioned to you before, I've served with your dad on the council, so it's great to be with two generations. Um, and Mike, you've been my, my right hand, uh, my floor leader, my vice chair for so long, and, and maybe we'll meet again here in four years. Uh, so it's been great to have you. Rich, I appreciate your leadership, uh, during the first two years of this term, and happy that you stayed as a member of the family and, um, you know, and offer your insight in so many ways. Uh, Jay, I got the best staff here. Jay, Gail, Pat, um, we, I so value having you with me and guiding me along the way, 'cause sometimes I'll come in here, and you've noticed a few times, I'm, I'm a fairly busy job, and sometimes I come in here a little frazzled, and it's like, "All right, where do we go from here?" And you're always keeping me on, on the straight and narrow, and, um, and my appreciation, obviously, to our other two alternates, Linda Manos and, um, Lam Nguyen. I appreciate their help, too, and we, especially during COVID. You know, I don't wanna forget all the work that had to go in to actually make that happen, and us to continue the people's work to pick up, do remotely, do what we did in chambers remotely. Um, that was, that was tough sometimes, but we got through it, and, um, uh, you know, and we set some nice precedents, and God forbid we have to do that again. You know, we've set the playbook for it. And so, you know, just as I wrap it up, I'm, I'm phenomenally grateful to be on this board and to have served as an elected official. I've been thinking about that in the last, in the last couple of days. You know, they were talking about how yesterday was the eightieth anniversary of Pearl Harbor, eight years ago today. People were listening to the famous FDR speech. Um, you know, one of our, um, famous World War II veterans, who was somebody I really looked up to when I was a kid, Senator, Senator Robert Dole, passed away this week. And I think about American democracy and the fact that it nearly, we are so privileged to be able to go to our constituents and be elected officials and serve and peacefully transfer power and, um, and play a part in our government and the future of our town, and the fact that through eighteen years of my life as a councilman, as a planning commissioner, and as a zoning commissioner, I've had the ability to do that. That's a phenomenal thing, and I will be eternally grateful for that opportunity, and I thank all of you for being part of that, and I'm, I'm gonna miss you guys, and I hope to see you again in other capacities, so. With that, I wish you all and your families Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Uh, the new board will come in in January, and I wish you all Godspeed. And with that, I move that the zoning commission stand adjourned, sine A D A. Can I have a second?
Mr. Vicola and Mr. Henrik, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously, and we are out of here at nine oh four. All the best. Sine A D A, it's a legislative term that refers to when a board adjourns with no further scheduled meetings until a new board comes in. Sine A D A. Ask Margot. She and I had a long discussion about this once. It is Latin, yeah.